Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Regular Meeting of Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019. My name is Michael Wentz and with us today is Nick Miller, our Sign Language Interpreter. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess presents Bill 1993, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Chief Equity Officer to Enter Into Professional Service Agreements or Contracts Between the City of Pittsburgh and Coro Pittsburgh for the Purpose of Attaining a Public Ally to Work on Census 2020 Projects and Outreach in an Amount Not to Exceed $15,000 Subject to Appropriation. Councilman Anthony Coghill presents Bill 1994, Resolution Naming the Basketball Court Located at 555 Larmore Avenue, Lot 215 as Costa Court. Councilwoman Deborah Gross presents Bill 1995, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title IX Zoning, Chapter 915, Environmental Performance Standards, Subsection 915.06, Sustainable Development for Publicity-Financed Buildings by Deleting Certain Language and Adding a New Subsection 915.08 titled Sustainable Development for City-Owned Facilities. Bill 1996, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into Agreements with Agencies to Provide Emergency Shelter Services, Street Outreach Services, Rental Assistance and House Relocation and Stabilization Services or Data Collection Activities as Associated with Emergency Solutions Grant Funds at a Cost Not to Exceed $1,180,626. Councilman Daniel Lavell presents Bill 1997, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Department of Public Safety on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter into a Special Activities Agreement with the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for Purposes of Holding the Junior Great Race and Richard S. Caligiri City of Pittsburgh Great Race in the Area of Point State Park. Bill 1998, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Saber Equipment in the Amount of $7,285 for the Furnish and Install of Equipment for Fire Bureau Apparatus Utility 4 for the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Fire. Bill 1999, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Three Rivers Fire Equipment in an Amount of $13,569 for Paratec Lift Bags and Accessories for the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Fire. Councilman Corey O'Connor presents Bill 2000, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for Light of Life Ministries Incorporated at 234 Vauntley Street, Pittsburgh, PA 15212. Bill 2001, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the City to Enter an Agreement with the PWSA in order to Design, Construct, and Maintain a Green Stormwater Infrastructure Project Woods Run Stream Removal Phase 1 Project upon the City's Property in Riverview Park. Councilwoman Teresa Kelsmith presents Bill 2002, Resolution Vacating A Portion of Gallatin Street in the 10th Ward in the 7th Council District of the City of Pittsburgh. Bill 2003, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter into an Agreement with the PA Department of Community and Economic Development Multi-Modal Transportation Fund Program. Should the Grant be Awarded by DCED to Provide Funding for the Riverview Park Davis Avenue Bridge Project, the Grant Proposal Includes an Ask of $1,803,533.20 with a Local Match of $772,942 included in the 2020 City of Pittsburgh's Capital Budget. In the Event that the Grant is Awarded, this Resolution Provides for an Agreement and Expenditures not to exceed $2,576,476 for this stated Purpose. Bill 2004, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City of Pittsburgh and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter into an Agreement with the PA Department of Community and Economic Development Multi-Modal Transportation Fund Program. Should the Grant be Awarded by DCED to Provide Funding for the Chartiers Avenue Project, the Grant Proposal Includes an Ask of $1,400,924 with a Local Match of $602,967 included in the 2020 City of Pittsburgh's Capital Budget. In the Event that this Grant is Awarded, this Resolution Provides for an Agreement and Expenditures not to exceed $2,9891 for this stated Purpose. Bill 2005, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter into an Agreement with the PA Department of Community and Economic Development Multi-Modal Transportation Fund Program. Should the Grant be Awarded by DCED to Provide Funding for the Beachview Broadway Plaza, the Grant Proposal Includes an Ask of $768,874.98 with a Local Match of $79,517.98 from the City of Pittsburgh's 2020 City Capital Budget and a Grant from Allegheny County's Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund of $250,000. In the Event this Grant is Awarded, this Resolution Provides for an Agreement and Expenditures not to exceed $1,098,392.84 for this stated Purpose. Bill 2006, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter into an Agreement with the PA Department of Community and Economic Development Multi-Modal Transportation Fund Program. Should the Grant be Awarded by DCED to Provide Funding for the Allegheny Center North Avenue Improvements Project, the Grant Proposal Includes an Ask of $2,330,324.27 with a Local Match of $998,710.40 included in the 2020 City of Pittsburgh's Capital Budget. In the Event this Grant is Awarded, this Resolution Provides for an Agreement and Expenditures not to exceed $3,329,034.68 for this stated Purpose. Councilman Bruce A. Kraus presents Bill 2007, Resolution Informing City Council of the Appointment of Richard Parsakian as a Member of the Arts Commission with a Term to Expire December 31st, 2021. Bill 2008, Resolution Appointing BJ Sampson to Serve as a Member of the Commission on Human Relations for a Term to Expire August 30th, 2023. Bill 2009, Communication from Jennifer Uhlzinger, Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting the City of Pittsburgh Quarterly Financial and Performance Report for the Period Ending June 30th, 2019. This concludes the reading for today, Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Regular Meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for today, Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mrs. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Lavell.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Here.
Five Members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And let the record reflect that we've been joined by Councilwoman Harris. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I ask that you would then remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Our first order of business is Proclamations. We have two proclamations that are to be presented and read into the record, and they come from Councilman Burgess. May I have Councilwoman Gross for Councilman Burgess? Yeah. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilman Burgess presents, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Sunday, September 1st, 2019 to be Jack and Jill of America Inc., Pittsburgh Chapter Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Councilman Burgess also presents, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, September 7th, 2019 to be the Pittsburgh Institute of Mortuary Science Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion in a second, please?
To move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
My motion passes. That concludes the proclamation portion of the council meeting and takes us into public comment. Anyone wishing to speak here at City Council this morning will have three minutes in which to do so. I would like to take this opportunity to remind you that our rules of council are clear when they state that comment is limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are at this time, or could at another time come before this council. I ask that you please begin by giving your name and your neighborhood in which you reside for our public record. The green light will indicate the start of your three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you'll have one minute to summarize your thoughts. When the red light comes on, your time has expired. Good morning, Ms. Brown.
Good morning. You know, you see me making faces, huh? Did you see him get ready to start? I guess he was going to tell a sergeant arm to put me out. You see him? He was, every time, I'm allowed to make faces. I can't turn my head to the back. And then he got nervous to say good morning. His tongue should be split every time he say good morning, and then just didn't disrespect me and treat me mean. And I, you know, I prayed all the way down here to be in a good mood, but every time I come, this man does something. Listen, okay, let's forget that. Please, Lord, I have to ask Jesus to calm me because I need to be calm. But anyway, Ms. Smith, the babies, we saw, it was your birthday last week. Okay, they want to come. I don't bring them down because he talks nasty to me and hollers at the babies and me, so I don't bring them, but they wanted to come. But anyway, they found out it was your birthday, and they said for me to send this to you. I'm supposed to say happy birthday to you, and then, okay, and then, this is a chick, an old chick gave you, a young chick a chick, and then the babies, as I was walking out, she said, she's beautiful. That's the little light complex one. And the other one said, tell her we love you. You know what? I ain't teaching that. And she's like, they shouldn't be like, not looking too good at you. And you see how the babies, I teach my babies love, and I do have a lot of love. Yous may not think so because I'm coming to you with things you need to know and you don't want to know. I don't know why yous won't follow little simple directions or simple suggestions, just like you getting ready to make, getting ready to make a park down at that end. People don't come down there. And like Big Daddy that works up there, PPG, says it's going to be a park for the homeless. Now you saying you need parking spaces because you're going to build houses and so on. And Ms. Smith, this is to you. I have been at K.L. Irvis, have been cleaning all around there, all the weeds this tall, because you know what? The old people say that if they look for a parking space for these spaces at the bottom of the hill, they're going to look at the top of the hill, where weeds are as tall as me. I thought it was the business, the owner, because I said, they say that the owner don't want the business and they don't want to get rid of it. But I was working and the Housing Authority, Victor, previous Housing Authority, said, Ms. Brown, this is city work. City, I want you to see all the weeds that I've taken out. I'm doing it because the raccoons too came up. You got the animals running up under the cars. I can't do it on the weekdays because the cars are there, but these citizens are a clear impersonation, I'm telling you, because one could fall trying to run. I can run, they can't. And do you, two raccoons, you know they come in pairs. Then you got the, you know, they're working down there. I myself, I've done a lot of work, and I thought it was, I'm asking to get paid. I want you to see what I mean.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. May we have our next speaker, please? May we have our next speaker, please? Okay, seeing no further speakers, we'll close the public comment portion of the council meeting and proceed into presentation of papers. Our first committee is our Committee on Finance and Law chaired by Councilman Burgess. May I have Councilwoman Gross for Councilman Burgess? Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1993, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Chief Equity Officer to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement and/or Contract between the City and Coro Pittsburgh for the Purpose of Attaining a Public Ally to Work on Census 2020 Projects and Outreach in an Amount Not to Exceed $15,000.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Coghill, our Chair of Urban Recreation, may I again please have Councilwoman Gross for Councilman Coghill?
Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1994, Resolution Naming the Basketball Court Located at 555 Larmore Avenue as Costa Court.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Gross, our Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1995, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title IX Zoning, Chapter 915 by Deleting Certain Language and Adding a New Subsection 915.08 titled Sustainable Development for City-Owned Facilities. Bill Number 1996, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of OMB to Enter into an Agreement with Agencies to Provide Emergency Shelter Services, Street Outreach Services, Rental Assistance and Housing Relocation and Stabilization Services or Data Collection Activities as Associated with Emergency Solutions Grant Fund at a Cost Not to Exceed $1,180,626.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Harris, our Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Lavell, our Chair of Public Safety Services. May I have Councilman O'Connor for Councilman Lavell?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavell presents Bill Number 1997, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety on behalf of the City to Enter into a Special Activities Agreement with the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for Purposes of Holding the Junior Great Race in Richard S. Caligiri City of Pittsburgh Great Race in the Area of Point State Park. Bill Number 1998, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Saber Equipment in the Amount of $7,285 for the Furnish and Install of Equipment for Fire Bureau Apparatus for the Department of Public Safety and the Bureau of Fire. Bill Number 1999, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Three Rivers Fire Equipment in the Amount of $13,569 for Paratec Lift Bags and Accessories for the Department of Public Safety and the Bureau of Fire.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman O'Connor, our Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 2000, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for Light of Life Ministries at the Recently Subdivided Parcel Number 9A Lot 191. Bill Number 2001, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the City to Enter into an Agreement with PWSA in order to Design, Construct, and Maintain a Green Stormwater Infrastructure Project Woods Run Stream Removal Phase 1 Project upon the City's Property in a Riverview Park.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Kelsmith, our Chair of Public Work Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Kelsmith presents Bill Number 2002, Resolution Vacating a Portion of Gatlin Street in the 10th Ward, 7th Council District. Bill Number 2003, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter into an Agreement with DCED and MTF. Should the Grant be Awarded by DCED to Provide Funding for the Riverview Park, the Grant Proposal Includes an Ask of $1,803,533.20 with a Local Match of $772,942 included in the 2020 City of Pittsburgh's Capital Budget. In the Event that Grant is Awarded, this Resolution Provides for an Agreement and Expenditures not to Exceed $2,576,476. Bill Number 2004, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City, the Mayor of the City and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter into an Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development MTF Fund Program. Should the Grant be Awarded by DCED to Provide Funding for the Chartiers Avenue Project, the Grant Proposal Includes an Ask of $1,400,924 with a Local Match $602,967,000 included in the 2020 City of Pittsburgh Capital Budget. In the Event that Grant is Awarded, this Resolution Provides for an Agreement and Expenditures not to Exceed $2,9891. Bill Number 2005, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter into an Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Multi-Modular Transportation Fund Program. Should the Grant be Awarded by DCED to Provide Funding for the Beachview Broadway Plaza, the Grant Proposal Includes an Ask of $768,874.98 with a Local Match of $79,517.98 from the City in the 2020 Capital Budget and a Grant from Allegheny County's Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund of $250,000. In the Event that Grant is Awarded, this Resolution Provides for an Agreement and Expenditures not to Exceed $1,098,392.84. Bill Number 2006, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter into an Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Multi-Modular Transportation Fund Program. Should the Grant be Awarded by DCED to Provide Funding for the Allegheny Center North Avenue Improvements Project, the Grant Proposal Includes an Ask $2,330,324.27 with a Local Match of $998,710.40 included in the 2020 City of Pittsburgh's Capital Budget. In the Event that Grant is Awarded, this Resolution Provides for an Agreement and Expenditures not to Exceed $3,329,034.68 for this stated Purpose.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Strasburger, our Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair has two appointments. We may begin with those, Madam Clerk.
Council President Kraus presents Bill Number 2007, Resolution Informing City Council of the Appointment of Richard Parsakian as a Member of the Arts Commission with a Term to Expire December 31st, 2021. Bill Number 2008, Resolution Appointing BJ Sampson to Serve as a Member of the Commission on Human Relations for a Term to Expire August 30th, 2023.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Bill 2007 is informing City Council of the Appointment of Mr. Parsakian, so it does not require council action. Is that correct, Council, or, Madam Clerk?
Correct.
So may I have a motion to approve, or do we receive and file, Madam Clerk?
This is for the Arts Commission?
Arts Commission. Will you receive and file? So may I have a motion to receive and file? May I have a second?
Second.
Do I have discussion, Councilwoman?
Just a little discussion.
Sure.
I just think that we need to really review what the Art Commission is actually, what they're actually charged with. I mean, I've heard a lot of people have complaints. They've actually subsided a little bit over the past few months, but initially there was a lot of complaints that they're not looking at the art for, you know, measurements and consistency and things like that. They're looking at the actual art and offering, an artist's objective, you know what I mean? It not necessarily is made, is up to them to decide what should go on the, whatever's hanging or whatever's being displayed. So I just think overall, I'd like to look a little bit more into the Art Commission and what their role is.
Thanks, Councilwoman.
I'll try and, if I may, just briefly.
Sure, Councilwoman Gross, followed by Councilwoman Harris.
Thank you. I've had a similar experience where it seems like when the Art Commission was created, something almost like, almost 100 years ago versus the function that it's playing now is that a lot of functions have been dumped onto this commission, and it's been a long time since the legislation was revisited. So I just want to say something like Councilwoman Smith said. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Harris.
Yeah, I would say ditto with Councilwoman Smith and Councilwoman Gross. And I am going to be abstaining on these today since the day that these are reviewed, I'm usually at magistrate's court. So, thank you.
Thank you. So just briefly, according to our website, the Art Commission works to improve the aesthetic quality of the city's public spaces. The Commission is comprised of seven members appointed by the mayor, and each member represents a various discipline in the arts and design field. The Art Commission is mandated to review the urban design, architectural, and landscape features of structures which are erected on or above land owned by the city. These are structures or landscapes which are within the public realm and under its control in which the city funds and are invested, including parks and bridges. The Art Commission administers the review process, which includes preliminary and final approvals. The Art Commission is also mandated to review all works of art owned by the City of Pittsburgh and also artworks proposed to be acquired by the city. So whatever your wishes, Councilwoman, we're happy to assist in.
Yeah, I'm definitely going to review it with anybody who wants to review it with us because I think that even just hearing those words, they're very vague, but I don't, it's my understanding that their role was initially to, you know, to look for measurements, not necessarily content unless you're giving suggestions that maybe you could see something better if they had done this or that. That kind of stuff is one thing. But if you recall, we wouldn't even have the banners up in Councilwoman Gross's area had it not been for Aggie Gross going down and ferociously fighting, and Councilwoman Gross's office did a lot of fighting for that too as well, correct?
Yes.
I mean, you shouldn't have to fight that hard to get banners up for veterans with the Art Commission that represents the city. So those are the kinds of things I want to look at.
All right. So separate from that, we do have an appointment sent over by the mayor for Mr. Parsakian. We have a motion and a second. We've had discussion. The motion is to receive and file. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstentions? One abstention from Councilwoman Harris. Okay, then, second, we have a resolution appointing BJ Sampson to Serve as a Member on the Commission on Human Relations. What is the desire of council? Okay, I have a motion to approve, and I have a second. No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstentions?
Stay.
One abstention. Okay. Then, Madam Clerk, I have a communication from the Office of Management and Budget. I'll need a motion to receive and file on that as well, please.
Council President presents Bill Number 2009, Communication from Jennifer Uhlzinger, Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting the City of Pittsburgh's Quarterly Financial and Performance Report for the Period Ending June 30th, 2019.
Thank you. May I have a- May I have a motion to receive and file, please? Second? Discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Aye. One abstention from Councilwoman Harris. Okay. Then we have three appointees that were interviewed last Wednesday under unfinished business. I'll need a motion to approve, please, after the clerk reads them.
Bill Number 1923, Resolution Appointing Samantha Bushman to Serve as a Member of the Ethics Hearing Board for a Term to Expire June 30th, 2022. Bill Number 1924, Resolution Appointing Knowledge Field Hudson to Serve as a Member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for a Term to Expire April 30th, 2021. Bill Number 1927, Resolution Appointing Megan Winters to Serve as a Member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for a Term to Expire April 30th, 2020.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion to approve? I have a motion in a second. Councilwoman Kell Smith for discussion?
I just want to thank the mayor for putting up some really great names, but really for working with me when I submitted Megan's name as a recommendation to them for the West End. And I want to thank Richard Butler, who previously served, but because he was hired with the city, he had to resign. And so I'm really happy that we're having somebody that, like Megan, who really is knowledgeable and cares about the issue, and I think that she'll be a great asset to it. But I really want to thank the administration for working with us and getting another great person and for appointing Richard in the first place.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Further discussion? Councilwoman, is that your hand? I can't tell.
Yes.
Yep, okay.
Yes, I'll be abstaining on 23 and 27, and I'll be voting for 24.
On 1923 and 1927, when the vote comes, you wish to abstain, and on 1924, you wish to approve. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we've had a motion to approve, we've had a second, we've had discussion. Should we do a voice vote on that, then, Madam Clerk, or not? No? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions? As noted, Councilwoman Harris wishes to abstain on 1923. 1927 wishes to approve 1924.
So not a...
Okay. All right. That concludes unfinished business and takes us into reports of committee for final action. We'll begin with Councilman Burgess, our Chair of Finance and Law. And once again, may I ask Councilwoman Gross for Councilman Burgess?
Thank you, pardon.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1989, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for August 28th with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1843, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Dicky McCamey and Killco in an Amount Not to Exceed $4,180.80 for Professional Legal Services in Connection with Police Matters.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of this bill under our Finance and Law Committee. Do we have further discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill's now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Gross.
Aye. Wait, aye. I don't know what I'm doing. Are we voting?
It's our first debate.
Thank you. Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
It's for real, though.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes, bill passed.
Okay, thank you. The bills, then, having received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. Next, we have our Committee on Public Work Services. Our Chair is Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Also, let the record reflect, please, that we have been joined by Councilman Lavelle.
Councilwoman Kell Smith presents Bill Number 1990, Report of the Committee on Public Works for August 28th, 2019, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1966, Resolution Providing for an Agreement between the City and Crafton Bureau in Connection with the Pavement, paving of Ingram Avenue between Duncan and Stevens Street, providing for the payment of the cost by the Bureau, the costs associated with the payment of Ingram Avenue. The estimated cost of preparation and completion of work is $32,249. Bill Number 1978, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Works to Enter Into an Agreement between the City and the Downtown Partnership for Services rendered by Clean Team Ambassadors with the South Side PED at an annual cost not to exceed Bill Number 1979, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership in an Amount of $11,662.88 for invoiced services rendered within the South Side PED charge to, payable from the PED Trust Fund.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Public Work Services Committee. Is there further discussion on any of the bills? Then seeing none, these bills are now ready for final action, and all in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes, bills pass.
Thank you very much. The bills, having received, then, the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Our next committee is our Committee on Urban Recreation. Our Chair is Councilman Coghill. May I again have Councilwoman Gross for Councilman Coghill?
President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1991, Report of the Committee on Urban Recreation for August 28th with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1908, Resolution Naming the Ferrywood Playground at Ferrywood Park as the Eric Guy Kelly Playground.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of this bill under our Urban Recreation Committee. Do we have further discussion on the bill? Okay, seeing none, the bill's now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes, bills pass.
Thank you. The bill, having received the legally required number of votes, has finally passed. Our final committee of the morning is our Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. Our Chair is Councilwoman Erica Strasburger.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 1992, Report of the Committee on Innovation and Performance and Asset Management for August 28th, 2019, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1971, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 801, which authorized the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter Into an Agreement with AMCOM by increasing the not-to-exceed amount to $2,310,000.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management Committee. Do we have further discussion on the bill? And seeing none, the bill's now ready for final action, and all in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes, bill pass.
Thank you very much. The bills, then, having received the legally required number of votes, is finally passed. That takes us into motions and resolutions. The Chair has one brief meeting announcement. Tomorrow, Wednesday, September 1st, council will be meeting at 9:30 a.m. for a pre-agenda interview for the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board here in council chambers. Council's regular meeting will follow immediately. If there's nothing from members, may I have a motion to excuse our absent members, approve our minutes, and adjourn our meeting?
To move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.